We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of January 28, 2020 is now called to order. The time is 6:04 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and also of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. We welcome this evening the North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts Junior Thesbian Troop 88623. This troupe is made up of two components, acting and musical theater. The musical theater class performing for you tonight is under the direction of Kathy Rividenaria and Stacy McDonald. Selected seventh and eighth graders earn a place in this class due to their singing, dancing, and acting skills. The musical theater troupe is very active at the school as well as in community performances. They usher shows, fundraise, perform for fellow students, and raise pride in the school community. They have participated with great success in the Junior Thesbian District Competition, where they received multiple superior ratings and will go on to perform in Orlando next week at the State Junior Thesbian Festival. The one act, "I Never Saw Another Butterfly," received a superior rating and was the only school from our district chosen to perform at the state level. Due to the high profile of the theater department, they were asked by Disney to pilot two musicals, which allowed them to have a part in helping create the final product. North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts was the very first group in the United States to stage Moana Junior. Disney actually took several of their ideas and used them in their now-licensed show. Disney was so impressed by what North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts team did with Moana Junior that they turned right around and offered them Newsies Junior, requesting that they use historically correct female newsies to see how that would work. They pulled off this challenge with rave reviews. At this time, here is the North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts musical theater class At this time, we'll pause briefly in case anybody needs to clear the performance area Please up some seats up front if anybody would like to move forward.[1107.04][1107.04](APPLAUSE) Did you see where the daycare center wrote on your stomach?[1121.14][1121.14](APPLAUSE) Read your note. Yeah, not so good. Okay, we'll resume now. At this time, please welcome Yusef Mouchaba, our student representative this evening from the School Board Student Advisory Committee. Yusef is an eighth grader at Lexington Middle School. Currently, he is the student government treasurer at Lexington as well as the Public Relations Officer for the Junior National Honor Society. Yusef is a member of the school's math team, completing in algebra, a member of the tennis team, and an editor of the school yearbook. He has been on the A honor roll throughout middle school and has earned a perfect score on the Math FSA this year. Outside of school, Yusef enjoys fishing, playing tennis, spending time with his family, going to the beach, watching the Florida Gators play football. Go Gators! In the near future, he plans to continue his education at Fort Myers High School in the IB program and then attend, guess where, the University of Florida. Yusef would like to earn a medical degree and one day open his own surgery clinic. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, three recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include six items under executive services, one item under academic services, two items under business services, five items under human resources, one item under information systems, one item under operations, as well as one item for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move.
Second. By Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Please record your vote. Sorry. Mrs. Giovinelli will deliver the invocation this evening, after which Mrs. Vaughn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. After the special presentations portion of the agenda, a brief recess will be called to allow those who wish to depart an opportunity to do so. Please rise now for the invocation.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all gifts. We thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our schools and the events for all our staff members and including the superintendent. We ask that you bless them abundantly and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in our decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust in us and the confidence of our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity and transparency and that all our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard us from the blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in that all that we do and say. In His name we pray, amen.
Amen. Amen. Introducing the cadet who will present the colors tonight is First Sergeant Kenneth Hawkins, Army Instructor for the Astero High School JROTC Program. First Sergeant Hawkins retired from the Army in February 2011 after 26 years of service and started working as a JROTC instructor in August 2012. And thank you for your service, Sergeant Hawkins.
Thank you for your support. Thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet First Lieutenant Alice Glennon. Alice is a senior and a great example of an outstanding leader and a citizen as a member of the Wildcats Varsity Raider Team for two years. In addition to being enrolled in the academically rigorous Cambridge program, Alice has been a member of the track team, a cheerleader, and was the captain of the cheerleading team this past year. Outside of school, she has been involved in talent pageants and teacher's Sunday School. After high school, she will attend Florida Gulf Coast University and then begin her career in the United States Navy. Ladies and gentlemen, Alice Glennon. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like the following individuals from Mariner High School to please join me at the lectern. Ms. Samantha Howard, art teacher, STEAM Academy Lead and AP Studio Art Program Lead, and Principal Dr. Thomas Michael. I would also like Dr. Jeff Spiro, Chief Academic Officer, and Mr. Clayton Simmons, Executive Director of High Schools, to also join me. The Lee County Teacher of the Year Program provides an opportunity to recognize instructional personnel who fosters excellence in education, provide local and district leadership, and have a proven record of superior teacher, as evidenced by student performance. This recognition celebrates the contribution of teachers who demonstrate the ability to inspire a love of learning in students of all backgrounds and abilities. Ms. Howard serves as an art teacher for grades nine through 12. She leads the STEAM program and leads the AP Studio Art Program at Mariner High School. Samantha serves as a district subject area specialist and is the president of the Lee Art Education Association. Her commitment to her students expand well beyond the classroom. Ms. Howard believes a collaborative effort by all stakeholders with a student-driven vision can and will lead to the education our student deserves. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Ms. Samantha Howard as the Lee County School District 2020 Teacher of the Year. I would like to invite the following individuals to join me at the lectern. Ms. Carol Wolke, District Volunteer Coordinator; Ms. Jessica Duncan, Executive Director, Student Services; Mr. Robert Mizoli, Principal, Tropic Isles Elementary; Ms. Casey Starek, Principal, Orange River Elementary; and Mr. Steve Hook, Principal, Pine Island Elementary. So each year, the Florida Department of Education invites each school district to nominate an outstanding school district.
an outstanding school volunteer in each of three categories: youth, adult, and senior. Their names are then submitted to the Department of Education for consideration for regional winner status. The willingness of these individuals to unselfishly give of their time, talents, and resources to serve as school volunteers is greatly appreciated. The school board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize this year's outstanding school volunteers. As I call your name, please come forward. Youth category, Alyssa Bernhard. Alyssa, I'm going to talk about you as you make your way over here. Alyssa is a student at North Fort Myers High School and volunteers at Tropic Isles Elementary. Alyssa volunteers in a kindergarten class, supporting student learning, encouraging positive behavior, completing managerial tasks for the teacher, and mentoring other student volunteers. Alyssa is a natural at facilitating math learning centers. She knows just the questions to ask when students are not understanding and keeps the students engaged in math using manipulatives or games. She designed an escape room event for the kindergarten Fall Fest booth where she made short videos to tell the participants the next clues to the game. Alyssa also organized a reading project involving high school students partnering up with elementary students to write a letter to Santa Claus. They taught the students how to write a formal letter, adding creativity to include voice of the writer and brainstorming techniques for what students wish for from Santa. Please join me in congratulating Alyssa. If Alyssa's parents would like to join her for a photo, please. Parents deserve a round two. Good job. In the adult category, I'd like to call Vicki Godfrey. So Vicki volunteers at Orange River Elementary. She is a most valuable volunteer. She is well-recognized at the school by everyone. She's become an integral part of what makes the school library a huge success. She processes new books for circulation, labeling and laminating, and re-shelving returned books. She engages students in reading and she creates bulletin boards that enable students to transform those bulletin boards into works of art. She assists in setting up and running book fairs. She's also involved with PTO and SAC, assisting with fundraising events. She also volunteers in first grade class with several students in MTSS. She assists with center activities to provide targeted support for struggling students. She is at school every day that she does not have other engagements. And get this: what's even more remarkable is that she uses public transportation to get to and from school. Please join me in congratulating and thanking Vicki Godfrey. And if Vicki's family would like to join her for a picture? Amazing. In the senior category, I'd like to call forward George Miller. I'm going to talk about you too while you walk over here. George Miller volunteers at Pine Island Elementary. Wait until you hear what he does. Mr. Miller works directly with all the fifth grade students in math class. He works one-on-one and in small groups to reteach math concepts and skills. Students request time with Mr. Miller. They actually ask to work math with him. He spends time reviewing math homework and classwork. Mr. Miller works with the teacher to implement the standards students are required to learn. Mr. Miller also works with the ESE teacher to provide one-on-one math instruction for students with special needs. And Mr. Miller gets to know students personally so that he can make a connection with them during their tutoring time. Mr. Miller also tutors the middle and high school Pine Island students that he meets at the elementary school. Mr. Miller also volunteers during STEM classes in grades three, four, and five. He's also a guest lecturer in STEM classes to share his knowledge of electricity. Pine Island Elementary fifth grade students met last year's School Improvement Plan science goal and scored 82% proficiency on the statewide science test. Mr. Miller is a part of the school and island community and has served on the SAC and as DAC representative for many years. And if we could have your wife join us for a picture? Thank you very much. Here we go. I would like to invite Mrs. Jessica Duncan, Executive Director, Student Services, and Mrs. Carol Wolke, District Volunteer Coordinator, to please join me at the lectern. And here they are. "The intent of the School Improvement and Accountability Legislation is to improve Florida schools by returning the responsibility for education to those closest to students: the schools, teachers, and parents. Recognizing the involvement of the community is vital to student success. The Commissioner of Education and the Commissioner's Community Involvement Council established the Five Star School Award, the highest award for community involvement. To qualify for this award, a school must receive or must achieve 100% of the required criteria and provide a portfolio that documents the achievement of criterion in the following areas: business partnership, family involvement, volunteers, student community service, and the school advisory council. This evening, we are pleased to recognize and extend congratulations to 14 schools that met the strenuous requirements to receive the Five Star School Award for the 2018-2019 school year. As I announce the name of the schools, I would like representatives from each to come forward for a group picture with the board members and superintendent. First is Bay Shore Elementary. Front and center.
Well done, Mr. Osman.
Bonita Springs Charter School. Calusa Middle. Edison Park Creative and Expressive Arts School. Gee Weaver Hips Elementary. Oh, did I skip Franklin Park? Okay. I know. I blew it. You want me to do that now? Franklin Park Elementary. Such great stuff in your school. Thank you. Lehigh Elementary. Lehigh Acres Middle School.
Yeah, I brought everybody.
That's good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good for you guys. North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. So I will tell you, the reason we're laughing is that I was supposed to call everybody up at the same time for the photos. And I blew it and I called up individual schools. So I started that. But I have since learned that this is the last time these awards are going to be given out. So there's... They're revamping the program. So we're giving this last batch a lot of individual love. Pelican Elementary. San Carlos Park Elementary. Two more after that. Three Oaks Elementary. Three Oaks Middle. And finally, we have Bellis Elementary. That's really, I know, well, thank you for being indulgent.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, Morgan. Oh, you're welcome.
At this time, we will take a brief recess so that those who wish to leave may do so. Right now. Thank you, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Bierman, please address the agenda item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, the chair will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair may address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during the public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition to clapping, booing, hissing are also prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow the rules regarding decorum should be ruled, shall be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern per Board Policy 1.11. Time per speaker is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have eight cards. Is there anybody else who plans to speak who has not yet filled out a card? Okay, we'll start with Mark Dahlberg, followed by Kevin Mulhern, followed by Melissa Phillips, followed by Alan Ringsmith. Please line up at the podium.
My name is Mark Dahlberg. I'm the director, band director, at Diplomat Middle School, and I'm also the Florida Band Master Association District 18 Chairperson. Tonight, you all got to observe the incredible Northport Myers Academy for the Arts, they were awesome, and at this time of year, all the directors, a lot of the arts components are gearing up for their assessments. Jazz bands go to their district assessments next week. One of the exciting things over the next couple of months is that the River District Alliance is once again giving our arts schools in Lee County, all of our art departments, an opportunity to showcase their talents on March 6th downtown Fort Myers at the River, through the River District Alliance. So I do encourage you to make sure your schools are being, are out there on March 6th showcasing their talents. It's a great way for the Lee County schools to showcase all of their talents and to let the city know that we, the arts are thriving in Lee County, and we definitely appreciate what you do for the arts in Lee County schools. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Steve, March 6th.
Thank you.
Mr. Mulhern.
Good evening, School Board members. For the record, my name is Kevin Mulhern. I spoke to you once before at the previous meeting regarding the sidewalk that should be installed near Allen Park Elementary. I'm with several of my neighbors this time. Here to encourage you to, please stay with us on this project, help us to shift this, to make this sidewalk a much safer place. In the previous, since the previous meeting, I was able to obtain the project documents and the scope of this project. And actually, today, at 4:55 PM, I just showed up at the City Hall, because I had not heard from City Hall from Friday, to speak to the engineer on this project, and she informed me that she had a meeting actually coming up this Thursday with a member of the school board, Kathy Ebaugh, the Executive Director of Facilities Planning and Development. They were going to meet together on Thursday to go over this. It appears that initially this, when this grant was applied for, the previous principal of the, of the school had requested the sidewalk to be placed on the east side of the road. I was not able to reach Jenny Moore to find out why that was, but really the place for this is to be closer to the school where there's an existing crosswalk, and that's what we're trying to entertain with, with you, to get behind us and make this be the safest place it can be. I was told that we'd need to have additional drawings, engineering, potential things done, and present that to FDOT. We did have a meeting on the 16th where Kevin Anderson, who's the City Council Ward 4 council person, Melissa Giovinelli, the current principal and the assistant principal, met us there with numerous neighbors about this potential sidewalk. I would encourage you to, to get with Melissa or support us any way that you can. We believe this is the best avenue to take, and we hope that you'll concur with us and support this project to be built in the correct place and the safest place. Thank you, and go Gators.
Next speaker is Melissa Phillips.
Not going to have you all look at this, I'm not sure whether you've had an opportunity to take a look at it, but it basically shows you the area that we're talking about, so if you're not familiar, I'd welcome all of you to take a look at what we're talking about. I've lived on Moreno Avenue for seventeen years, raised two girls, both of which attended Allen Park Elementary. We are strong proponents of having a sidewalk and safety being the most important thing that we're here to talk about. It's the safety of the children and the safety of our community members who utilize the sidewalk to walk our dogs and to walk around and to get fresh air. So basically, we're just asking that you support us to make sure that this sidewalk means that children cross the road once instead of three times, because you're just increasing the opportunity for children to get hurt, and there's enough of that happening in the news, and I think we need to really stand together as a community to support doing the right thing for the sidewalk. If you're here tonight and you're here to represent the community of Allen Park, if you could just stand for a moment, because I'd like the board to see how many people are here. They're not all speaking, you're okay, but we do want you to know that we're here, we have a petition, we already have 133 signatures at last count, and it's since been on the news, so I do ask, please, that you support us and help us to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Alan Ringsmith, followed by Sarah Faulkner, followed by Jane Broadstone, Dennis Hall, then Travis Burt.
Alan Ringsmith, good evening, thank you so much for being here, thank you so much for your attention, there's very little I can say to add much to what you've just heard, but you're going to hear other people after me, so I thank God that I have this position. You all might have children, and if you don't have children, bear with me, every parent I, I know cares the most for their children, they want their children to be safe, they want them to be well, they want to be guided. There's a sidewalk already around the school where I've lived for 26 years, and it's right next to the fence, they're talking about putting the sidewalk on the east side, and on the west side would be right up against the fence, just so that it gives you a better idea of what we're talking about, there is an existing sidewalk there, so making it one cross and walking along the fence right there would be the most guarded place for the children to walk. I'm not going to belabor it, I lived there for 26 years, I can't even understand why they'd want a sidewalk on the other side of the street where it would be so much extra work and really just a safety hazard. So consider that, as we all pull together for our children for this next generation, we need to stick together, we need to do the right thing. Thank you so much, God bless.
Thank you.
Sarah. Sarah Faulkner, here.
Good evening to all of you, my name is Sarah Faulkner, and I'm probably the newest member in the Allen Park Elementary School community, been there four years, and there's nothing better than hearing the laughter of children as they're out there in that playground area having a very good time, and part of that to continue is to ensure the safety of our biggest asset, which is our children, as we look to the future. And having those children who tend to have flighty thought patterns, crossing one crosswalk can sometimes be challenging for them, but now with the proposal for that sidewalk expansion to be on the east side and tailing crossing three times is exponentially increasing the chances that a child will be injured or, God forbid, killed. This is a very highly traffic area with a lot of cut-through from 41 to McGregor. We, as the guardians of our greatest asset, children, need to make sure that we are being their advocates for being as safe as possible to ensure that they can pick up the gauntlet and move forward in looking after their communities and their children's children. So please, whoever has the responsibility for this, whoever has ownership, step up to the plate, do the right thing, ensure the safety of our children. One crosswalk versus three, I don't think I need to say anymore, please, 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 safety of our children and our communities as we go forward, thank you.
Jane Broadstone.
Good evening, everyone. My property, actually, the backside of my property is on Moreno. I took a cup of coffee to sit out and watch how many children in the afternoon came out of school and crossed Moreno. It's somewhere between 35 and 40 a day. They walk in the ditch, they walk in the middle of the road, and if they cross over to the west side, they're going to have to cross over three times, so they're taking the end of that sidewalk, catty corner, which makes them cross three roads, not, because it's catty cornered. I nearly seen them get hit by a car, it's just the most horrible thing, and there's like a little crosswalk they could walk straight across and then back over Sunset and down Moreno, they will not do that. They take the west side and cross catty cornered over to Moreno. So they go over Moreno once, twice, and then over to Sunset, which is very dangerous because the traffic just speeds through there, it's just horrible, it's just, you just want to hope they just get out into where they're going safely, so please, we need a sidewalk, and the best option would be over by the fence, because that's the path they take pretty much every day, and then cross catty corner, because they're actually in a ditch over on that, on the west side, so they need to raise it up, build it up, and give them a straight cross pathway, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Dennis Hall, followed by Travis Burt.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Lee County School Board, it's indeed a pleasure and an honor to speak with you tonight. To make this brief, I am the first theater teacher at East Lee County High School. I am here in Lee County for art, notice, I didn't say the arts, but art. What art can do to a student's life, I know what it did for mine. I've always said that the core classes may be the bones, the skeleton of a child's education, but the arts is its life's blood. That's what, that's what I believe, and that is my mission. I come here tonight to let you know how this very thing has affected a few of my students at East, one of which is here tonight. I come from an environment where art was normal, an everyday part of the educational process, especially the performing arts, which allow a freedom of expression found nowhere else, art completes us. I was able to represent not only East Lee County High School, but Lee County at the 2019 Tony Awards this past June, and I was very honored to do so. Whenever asked, I pointed to my little pocket square given to me by East Lee County saying, "I am here for art," and it was very wonderful that art and education was primary at the Tony Awards. This is what I've done for almost two decades here in southwest Florida in a variety of locations, I've now found, I am now at East, and I'm here with a purpose. For nowhere else is art more argued about, more questioned, and more needed than anywhere else I've ever seen, although the theater department at East is still in its infancy, we have managed to do five productions with each one, the department has grown ever so slightly, but grown. The image of the school has changed in no small way due to the influence of a few art teachers there that they have given it. I've watched students through the arts emerge into a more complete version of themselves. It has the power to unite a community, to unify a school and its purpose in that community, but most important- But most important, it can change the direction of a student's life. I have seen it again and again. In retrospect, I have to say that the work I do, although trying and frustrating, is the most gratifying I have ever done. When I see a former student make a contribution, a significant contribution to this art form, therefore the world, I see art in action. So let's continue to make art a primary focal point in Lee County education. And a few, there's a few words from a student of mine at East. Travis Burt.
Hi. I'm a student of Mr. Hall's, but beyond that, I'm also the president of his theater troupe. So it explains the weird dress. I can definitely say without a doubt that the guidance of this man right here and just the arts as a whole have definitely changed my life for the better. Being in the arts has definitely taught me many virtues, most important of which I would definitely say is patience and the ability to roll with the punches, to use a term like that. Mr. Hall likes to tell a story about the first time I walked into his classroom because I didn't even know there was drama club at the school at first. I remember it slightly different than he does. He remembers a lot more refined aspects of myself, but I can definitely say that I walked into that classroom very nervous and scared. But now, three years afterwards, I can definitely say that I'm much more confident and much more willing to take risks. I'm actually going to most likely pursue the arts after high school. I'm planning to go to an acting college, actually, so he's going to help me with that. So if there's a call to action here, I definitely just say, please, support the arts in any way that you can because my story isn't exactly unique. It just needs, you know, it's a seed. It needs a little bit of water to grow. So thank you so much for your time. Yeah.
That completes your public speakers for this evening.
Thank you very much. Well, there are obviously two themes here, so I'll start with the Allen Park sidewalk issue. I had an opportunity to speak before with Kathy Ebaugh, and she assures me that, number one, the planning, design, and construction of a sidewalk is the responsibility of the city of Fort Myers, but that the school district of Lee County staff is working closely with the staff at the city of Fort Myers to make sure that the completed project will be the safest and most reasonable decision. And the community will be involved and engaged, and their thoughts will be considered. So you off to a good start this evening, and we continue to work in partnership with our city and support safety as a number-one priority for our children. So, thank you.
Ms. Fisher, just if I could add a little bit to that.
Please do.
In terms of where this thing started, I think it was back in 2012, but the district had originally submitted a Safe Walks School Grant to construct the sidewalk, and that grant apparently did not allow the placement on long school property. However, that project was not selected for a Safe Walks to School Grant, therefore that's not a funding source and therefore is not at issue here. We do have grant funding from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which does not have any stipulations there. So as you mentioned, we will be working with the city of Fort Myers, who have always been good partners with us, and I'm sure we'll come to, you know, a good conclusion that will, that of course, take into the interest of the student's safety above all. And as was, I think was mentioned, our staff does have a meeting with the city on this, a little bit later this week on Thursday.
Thursday. Thank you very much. That's great. So our Teacher of the Year this year is an art teacher, Samantha Hall Howard. You know, art inspires and enhances and does change lives, keeps kids in school, and increases academic achievement. So Mr. Dahlberg and Mr. Hall, thank you for what you do to make a difference in the lives of kids and in our community. This is a very art-focused community. Our city of Fort Myers has Art Night and Music Night, and Pine Island has Art Night and Music Night, and people enjoy and support the arts. Please be sure that on March 6th, you attend downtown Fort Myers to see the beautiful works and talents of our kids. This board is supportive of the arts and, to my knowledge, has been for many years, and we hope to continue to be able to do that. So thank you all, and we appreciate you. Travis, good luck at acting school. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Giovinelli.
I have none.
Ms. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
No, thank you.
Ms. Gittens.
Yes, I have D2 and G2.
D2 and G2. Ms. Vaughn.
No, thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent items with the exception of the pulled items D2 and G2?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Vaughn.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gittens. Please record your vote. Okay, motion carries. We have two pulls to address, and Dr. Atkins, would you please read your recommendation for the pulled item D2?
Okay, D2 is recommended action is approval of the appointment to the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee effective January 29th, 2020 for the term indicated for the individual in the, in the agenda item.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the pulled item?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Giovinelli.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gittens. Any discussion? Ms. Gittens.
Yes, the reason I'm pulling D2, approval of advisory board appointment, I, late this afternoon, got a correspondence, and due to that recent information, which I will read, and then I will suggest what I would like to do, and this is from the person that was presented for the EDAC committee, Patricia Sala. Dear Ms. Gittens, thank you for asking me to serve on the EDAC committee through the end of the year. I had agreed to serve in the position until you could find a community member for the next year, but now I have reservations. I was approached by several people with concerns that board members making disparaging, non-factual public comments about me and your recommendation for my appointment to EDAC. I am very concerned about the process and would strongly suggest you reconsider my appointment for the board vote tonight. Please let me know how I can assist in the future. Thank you for your consideration, Patricia Sala. Based on this communication, unfortunately, I am withdrawing my nomination, and I will present another one in the future. And for the record, I am disappointed.
Any other comments or discussion? Ms. Vaughn?
I'm just, to say that I'm surprised and shocked that we should have to get a letter like this from a member of our community who serves our community so well. Ms. Sala and I have worked together on the census, and I know that she's involved in lots and lots of community organizations. So the fact that word somehow got to her, that people had made negative remarks, is just really shocking to me. And on the record, to Patricia Sala, my friend and colleague that I've worked with in many community projects, I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments? Mrs. Giovinelli.
Has anybody reached out to her? Do we know?
I've spoken to her.
Because I'm a little taken back myself. She used to be on EDAC when I was on EDAC, and she was a very, she was an asset to EDAC, so I'm surprised. Is there something that we could do as a board that would? I don't know. I mean, I know, the advisory committee is our committee, but we can't have disparaging comments being made for people that's on an advisory board.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sorry, Madam Chair, in light of Ms. Gittens' withdrawal of the nomination, I think it would be appropriate to withdraw the motion at this time. The motion was to appoint this person, and Ms. Gittens has now withdrawn the person from consideration.
Do we need another motion to withdraw?
No, I think if the maker of the motion could just withdraw the motion, then that would set the record straight.
And I did say that, but I'll repeat it. I do withdraw the motion to appoint Patricia Sala to the EDAC committee. Basically, I do not want to put a citizen through that process. Thank you.
Does Mrs. Giovinelli have to?
The motion was made to approve the item by Ms. Giovinelli so she can withdraw that motion now, just so that we don't have a pending motion on the floor to appoint a person whose nomination has been withdrawn.
A motion to withdraw.
And do I need to mention that I still have an appointment position, and I will do that in the future?
I believe that was mentioned in your comments.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. And I will just say that I'm surprised and disturbed by this because we have volunteers in this community who we solicit to help us and support us, and I think that they always need to be treated with respect. So I think at this time, then...
There's no further action to be taken on this item.
Okay, there's no further action. Right, okay. Dr. Atkins, please read your recommendation for the pulled item G2.
Okay, the recommended action is approval of the adoption of seven job descriptions as a part of Phase III of the Envision 2030 Job Description Review.
Is there a motion for the pulled item?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, did it, was that been? Oh, Ms. Morgan. Okay, and seconded by Ms. Giovinelli. Any discussion? Ms. Gittens.
Yes, I'm pulling this because after our briefing yesterday and discussions about the Envision 2030 job descriptions, the one that I did ask a question about was the director position, and I, if you review our meeting, I asked about the salary for that. So I am basically concerned about grant-funded positions, and I need clarification on the absolute cost of a grant position. And the reason being, I would like to recommend that if there's a grant position that is not funded by the district, that we make it clear that if the grant, when the grant expires, that the position be brought before the board for reauthorization. I have seen at times a grant position, and the grant expires, and then it just rolls into, we continue it by rolling into the budget. And I believe we should readdress that before that happens. So that's why I'm asking for the pull to address that portion of it and not just approve that position without that information.
Well, I can, I can address that. First of all, we do make it clear at this point, that was a practice that we, a practice we've put in place a while ago to make it very clear that grant-funded positions are funded through the life of the grant. That's typically even a part of the advertising. This is, this is a federal title grant. It's funded through Every Student Succeeds Act. Title IV grants received every year as long as there is ESSA. This year, Title IV is a $2.1 million grant for Lee County. If the Title IV money go away, so does the position. And with this particular position, you know, as is true with any administrative position, you know, those are annual appointments that come before the board every year regardless of a grant. And then finally, the last thing, I just want to say, grants in particular, sometimes grants are used to seed innovative practice, and if you do come up with something that is, is, that you want to sustain with your resources within Lee County, we can work to do that, but that is only upon, again, consultation with the board, and you approve, you know, you approve the budget every year. So this position would come before the board every year as a part of the annual contracts that you would have, and if the grant went away, then, then so would be the position unless we came here and said, well, we have a alternative funding. This is what it has done. We feel this is a good use of district dollars.
Okay, and you said it's stated on the job description that it is just for the life of the...
Typically, it's done in the, actually, the posting of the position, but I, okay, so that's, Dr. Appruet's shaking her head there, so.
Okay, and that, that's all I wanted to make sure, is that it was stated in there that is, this position we're approving is for the life of the grant and otherwise would come back before the board.
Yes, ma'am.
At that time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Based on that information, then I will retract my pull. I'm not sure, attorney, how I say that?
You just vote.
No, I think you can just vote at this point. It's been moved and seconded.
Voice vote, right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries 7-0. Included in the approval of the consent items on the agenda are resolutions proclaiming February 2020 as National Black History Month, February 2020 as Career and Technical Education Month, February 3rd through 7th, 2020 as National School Counseling Week, as well as February 4th through 6th, 2020 Drug House Odyssey, a Lee County prevention event, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Dr. Atkins, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment who were approved under the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, it's my pleasure to introduce Heather Leonard, Staffing and Talent Management from Senior Manager to Director, Staffing and Talent. She's been with that division for many, many years and has a lot of experience in, I'm sure, is an expert in the field, so.
Know that. Congratulations, Heather. Thank you. Before closing the regular meeting, I'll ask Dr. Atkins to present his recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
Okay, the recommendation is for the approval to revise Policy 4.35 Head Start Eligibility Recruitment and Selection and Enrollment. Clarify that early head start transitioning students and children who will be served for the third year in the head start will no longer be taken before Policy Council for eligibility waiver should their re-verified income ever become set income guidelines. The criteria has been revised and reflect changes in the application age for early head start from three years old to 30 months. Revisions have been made to reflect the most families applying for the early head start childcare partnering or not receiving the school readiness subsidy. childcare partnering or not receiving the school readiness subsidy of the time of application. Effective date of this revision shall be January 29, 2020.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on this one item. The time allowed for comment is three minutes. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium or the left section of the auditorium who wishes to speak to the board? I will now close this public hearing and reconvene the regular school board meeting of January 28, 2020. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendation for this evening's public hearing item.
It's recommended action approval to revise Policy 4.35 Head Start Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection and Enrollment.
Is there a motion to approve, board members?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gittens and seconded by Mrs. Jay Venelli. Any discussion? Okay, please record your vote. Next on the agenda is board members' comments or reports. Mrs. Jay Venelli will begin with you this evening.
Okay. I just had a couple things. First of all, I'd like to thank the Allen Park neighborhood and neighbors and community for coming out, and I feel confident that the school district will work with the city and get the safety aspect taken care of and get the sidewalk where the children are safe. So I feel very confident in that. Also, it's National School Choice Week, so I, we all got, it's like we all got our little scarves, and I've been keeping myself warm with it, so, thank you. And at the FSBA meeting, they gave us, we had a little, someone, a presentation regarding floridapta.org, and it's a very, I think it's only a couple of years old, a website with lots of information on it, and it's really for, more for the community, but it's also, they were telling all the school board members about it, and it was, you could only really get to it through your computer, so not, can't do it by your phone. So I would recommend the community to check out the florida.pta.org. And then, what else did I have? I had one other, oh, I wanted to bring up the, the OIG's answer regarding the law enforcement license to carry. I would like to bring up that to, the attention to the community that are, like I had been saying prior to this, is that the policy, our policy is not in line with the law, and I would like to make a recommendation that the policy reflect what the law states so that there's no confusion with school board members understanding that law enforcement is allowed to carry a gun through the state and the federal government, so, and their license to carry, and they can do that. So I think that's something that we as a board need to understand.
Do you want further comment on that?
Anyone comment?
I, we, just to refresh everyone's recollection, the prior board attorney requested an opinion from the Florida Attorney General on whether the school board can bar police officers from carrying their service weapons into a school board meeting. The Attorney General's opinion, based on two prior opinions, is that if the employer department of the particular police officer requires or otherwise permits the officer to carry the, his or her service weapon while off duty, then the school board should allow the officer to carry the weapon into the school board chambers. Because we don't really have a way of verifying that instantly, I, our recommendation would be that, that officers who are, who show that they are either on duty or off duty officers who have their service weapons be allowed to carry them, because it would be, it wouldn't be really practical to be able to verify with each department whether or not it has a policy of requiring the officers to carry them. It is my experience representing a number of cities with police departments that almost all of our departments do require their officers to carry their service weapons while they're off duty.
So then...
Do I need to make a motion to instruct?
I think that just as part of our normal duties, we will review the, the policy and make sure that it's in line, and we'll bring back a, a policy that's updated and to be in line with the Attorney General's opinion.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
That's all you have? Ms. Patrica?
I have two super quick things. Mr. Mulhern, I just wanted to address you specifically and tell you, what you said tonight was you encourage us to stay involved. We, as a board, don't do the legwork, so to speak. We're not looking at drawings. We're not determining where sidewalks go, but we do provide direction to the superintendent, and the superintendent provides direction to his staff, and I think the superintendent has heard us loud and clear that, not, not that he even had to hear from us, that safety is our number one concern for our students. So I appreciate the encouragement, but we're on it. We're definitely on it. And the other thing that was really cool tonight is one of the women came to the microphone and referred to it as the Allen Park Elementary School Community. Can you think of another area that's named after a school? Like the Estero High School Community? No. The Pine Winds Elementary Community? No. Like, you guys have embraced that school, and, and it's part of your identity as to where you live, and I just thought that was really cool. And then the last thing I want to talk about is, Ms. Vaughn, I've had some time to consume the materials that you presented to us with regard to the census at our last meeting, and I really appreciate you spearheading this and getting the information out to the community, and I also appreciate staff for putting that together. I thought it was really cool. The census makes sense for us, cute little play on words, and the graphics were really neat and in line with everything else that we put out, so just really good job there. So, thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Jordan?
Okay, thank you. And as well, Mr. Mulhern, I apologize.
I, my children went to Allen Park, so I understand, but we're coming from the other side, so I understand your concern there. And thank you for being a part of that. But I just have a few things as well. We had the opportunity to attend the Legacy Honor Gala and the Unity Breakfast last weekend, and two of our very own, Jared Edie and Amy Desomar, were honored and received a standing ovation. And of course, we were the standing ovation, as well as others. And then we also attended the MLK March.
Carl Burnside.
Oh, and Carl Burnside. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me of that. So three of ours. We attended the MLK March. The district was, some of the district people were there. We had, Dr. Atkins was there as well. We were carrying the banner, and it was great to be out there with everybody. I had the Northrop Myers Academy. They're great. We had the opportunity to go and see their Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. It was fabulous. And coming up shortly will be Frozen, so everybody has to go to these schools and watch these performances. These kids just do an excellent job, and just everything that goes into it, we really need to be a part of that. I also, this week, participated with, Ms. Morgan was there as well, the district orientation for the community partnership schools that will be taking place at Franklin Park coming up, and that's really exciting news as well. And then today, we attended, some of us attended the 2020 Building Our Legacies, which will be our future teachers, and that was exciting. There was about 150 to 200 kids there, juniors and seniors from throughout the county, and just walking around and hearing them, and I spoke to one table, and I said, why, why do you want to be a teacher? And they said, I want to be a teacher because I could not speak English when I first came here, and that's how I learned to speak English. So they want to give back, and that just was really very touching. And of course, we were all up, meeting with our legislators in Tallahassee last week. That was pretty exciting. And I also wanted to announce too, the Art Fest for this weekend will be taking place. So that's at the end of the week, and a lot of our students participate in that with the chalk walk and recyclable arts and just a lot of different things, and that's another place to go and support our students and see everything that they're doing out there, because it is very, it's, it's pretty amazing. And last but not least, one of our own, again, for the fifth year, I think, in a row, or fifth Super Bowl in a row, Sammy Watkins will be representing the Chiefs, and he's one of our own. So that's what I have to share today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, first of all, I would like to congratulate our entertainers from earlier this evening, and looking forward to Frozen. Yusef, thank you for joining us, and glad to have you here. I noticed that you were on student government. That was my thing when I was in, in, teaching in high school, so I know you're doing a great job with that. And fishing, my husband would love to meet you. Okay. One of the things I wanted to, to bring up in yesterday's meeting, we talked about recruitment of the board attorney, and as I looked at the project overview and the process, I personally was a little concerned, the fact of the board involvement, and I would like us to take a look in future, when we are looking at board positions, to possibly do so with an outside company to do the search. It, it can get very tricky and close to a conflict of interest by doing the process in-house, and I just wanted to put that out there. On the Black History Month resolution, in the Library of Congress, they do call it African American History Month, so I don't know, I'm not, I'm black and I'm African American, I don't know which one you want to use. I'm just saying that the Library of Congress has, has it listed as African American, and we may want to, to look at that, just to be in compliance with that. The letter from Ms. Sala about the position, I will place that in with the minutes, with the archived information. And in the last few weeks or so, or months, there's been, you know, we've been talking about safety and security, and, and I would like to put forth that we talk about the idea of metal detectors. I know it has come up from time to time, but I don't believe we've workshopped it. So I'm suggesting that we somehow put it in a discussion in a workshop with the safety and security team to give us some background on that. I've heard from several parents about that as well, and a lot of them feel that if the weapons are stopped before they get in, it, it provides a lot, another level of safety for their children, so, and I know there's the opposite discussion about it. As far as the arts, we talk constantly in academics about critical thinking, and the arts are something that really helps critical thinking. I have a friend that's a painter, and she's constantly, I mean, all times of the day and night, my phone is dinging because she's had an idea, and she gets up and she paints it, and takes a picture and sends it to me, and then she's thinking about what to call it. The latest one is called the Stairs or the Rise, but it does, you know, bring about that critical thinking skill that otherwise students may not have or may not use. So the arts is something that helps academically and also helps with their, their growth and communication skills and just getting along with others, and we saw that here today. Thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Vaughn?
Okay, to the many speakers who spoke on behalf of putting in a safe sidewalk expansion by Allen Park Elementary, I too want to thank you for your, your passionate advocacy for, for our children. I'm going to echo, re-echo some remarks already about the arts, just to say that ditto, I, we, the arts are, it always bothered me to see STEM. I like that A in STEM for the arts. Third thing is, I have been, of course, all of us as board members are liaisons to various citizens, board citizens advisory groups. I was also, prior to being on the board, a citizen member of the group, and I just want to put it out there to all of you that, I don't know how many of you are sitting in here anymore, but people that may be watching, listening, that we do really value our citizens that, that volunteer their time and their talents to be on our boards, and I hope this doesn't taint anything or have anybody have second thoughts about it, because it's very unusual what happened here tonight. Going to lead in, I, we have a special something that's going to be on the screen in, in a minute. Thank you, Jason. Jason's like, oh, it's time to go home. Anyway, I am the census liaison. Thank you, Ms. Patrica, for thanking me, but it's, it's really been my pleasure, because I've gotten to meet and work with a lot of people, and let me say, go to a lot of meetings. The last one that I went to this past week, it, it was, let's see, it was Lee County, okay? And they wanted us to share, you know, what have you been doing? And a lot of people were, you know, they were in the nascent stage of this, and then I said, well, I'll share. And when I gave the list, and I, of course, credited the, the staff, and shout out to Irma Lancaster and her crew who worked to develop the, the lovely flyer that we have, we're on top of this, and that's how I told, that's what I said. I say, I said, Lee County Schools, we have, we have this nailed, and in case there's anybody out there that hasn't heard some of the reasons why it's particularly important to us, is because of the many, many ways that the, the data from the census helps us to get federal funds. And one, another group that I want to give a shout out to, Jean LaFountain and the Early Childhood Services is really putting out the information on this, because newborn babies and children under four years old are particularly hard to count, not because they're running around, I guess, because the parents don't think, you know, maybe they think only adults, I'm, I'm not sure, but we have had, over the years, with the censuses, particular undercounts with the young children. And when the young children are, are not counted, then important decisions that are affected by our numbers, they're affected. And certainly, with our district having a push toward pre-K and, and trying to bring more children in at age four for pre-kindergarten, this is just so important. We need every one of those little dimes. And so now, we're going to pause for a brief commercial from census.gov for all of you here and all of you watching or listening from home.
What is the 2020 Census? Every 10 years, the census records everyone living in this country. It's written in the Constitution and comes in a questionnaire that counts everyone who lives at your address on April 1st. The data can be used to inform funding for services like fire stations, schools, clinics, and representation that affect your community.
How will 2020 Census data be used? Where there are more people, there are more needs for public services. That's why the census is used by the government to inform funding decisions each year. But that's not all. It's also used by nonprofits to inform services, by businesses to create jobs, and even by students for school projects. Understanding how the population changes helps us shape communities across the country. Understanding how the population changes helps us shape communities across the country for the better.
How does the 2020 Census affect representation? There are 435 seats in the House of Representatives. These get distributed to the 50 states by population, and an accurate census response helps your state get the right amount of seats. States with smaller populations get at least one, while states with larger populations might get more.
How do I take the 2020 Census? In March 2020, every address in the country will receive an invitation to complete a simple questionnaire, and there are three ways to respond. Number one, do it online. Number two, call by phone. Number three, send it by mail. For those who don't respond, a census taker from your community will follow up and assist you.
Is my 2020 Census data safe? After sending your census response, your personal information is kept safe. By law, it can't be shared with any other government agency, law enforcement, or landlord, no one. So take your 2020 Census with peace of mind. Shape your future, start here, visit 2020census.gov.
And that concludes my remarks.
Can I just say that was a really cute video, but I think that Jason Company would have done a much cuter video.
Well, maybe some of his, the students that, I wonder if any of them will do, well, actually though, it's not till May, isn't it? When it, yeah. What's the, it's, yeah.
Maybe Friday, maybe, but entries are due in March.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's a great, a great idea, but they're going to be a little late for this, but you're right.
Can we add language into that category for this?
Oh, maybe some of the kids would release theirs early?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Awesome. Make sure you fill out your census questionnaire. Mrs. Morgan?
Since I consumed so much of your standing time and so much of your seat time out here, I will make it very, I do apologize for that.
Given, it's all right.
I would like to, I thought the way the students introduced themselves for the North Fort Myers Academy, I want to call them skits, but that's not what they were.
That's being society.
Well, no, I know, but whatever, they're little things. I thought that was terrific, I really liked that. I also want to mention to Ms. Patrica and to all of you, I went to the, what is it, the Lehigh Chamber of Commerce Gala, recognizing principals at each of the high, at each of the schools in East Lee County, and Melissa Robery, who is principal at East Lee County High School, was thrilled because the Lehigh Chamber of Commerce is changing their name to East Lee Chamber of Commerce, and so she figures she is now the representative neighborhood school for East Lee County, so I just wanted to throw that out there, and those are all my comments, because everybody else has covered everything else.
Ms. Corey might not be as happy with that.
That's right.
Or Ms. Watson, okay.
Thank you all, board members, and now, Yusef, do you have something you'd like to share with us?
Yep.
Yes, okay.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the board members for this amazing opportunity, and I'm happy to be a part of Lee County School District, and will continue to take the advantage of opportunities to positively impact my school and the entire school district. I appreciate you giving students the opportunity to have a voice and be involved right alongside our district leaders. I've enjoyed my time here with you this evening, and also, I'd like to thank my principal, Ms. Bueno, for coming out here this, coming out here to this meeting tonight, and also thanks to all the teachers out Lexington, thanks again, and go Lynx.
And we thank you for coming, I thank you personally too, because each and every time we have a student come and share his voice with us, it's really important, and it verifies for us that we are doing the right thing and giving kids an opportunity to speak to us and share their needs and their successes, and we learn a lot all the time from our kids. I want to do a little commercial too, I don't have it on video, but as you know, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Lee County Coalition for a Drug-Free Southwest Florida. So this year, February 4th, 5th, and 6th, at the Civic Center on Bay Shore Road in North Fort Myers, we will be having our prevention event featuring a 40-minute walkthrough play. And I want to say that we partner with the Drug-Free Coalition, along with the Lee County Sheriff's Office, our local police departments, Lee Health, the 20th Judicial Circuit, DMS and FIRE, and local churches, all participate in that, and many of our high school drama kids are participating in the acts. So it is a big community effort for prevention, and it has lasted all these years, so I encourage people who have an opportunity to go during the day when our 5th graders are going through, or on the evening of February 5th, when it's parent night. Following the tour, the Carolina Panther, Trey Boston, will be there to talk to the kids and, and other people who want to talk to him also. So I also want to keep this short, so I'm going to, in addition to thanking Yusef, I want to thank Deputy Yadi for keeping us safe here this evening, and we appreciate our partnership with the Lee County Sheriff's Office. And just a thank you to our students, our family, our hardworking staff, and our community partners who make Lee County a great place to live. And now, Mr. Bierman?
I have nothing.
And Dr. Atkins?
I have no comments this evening.
Okay. Wow. Then, that being said, we're going to get out of here early tonight. The next meeting of the board is on Monday, February 10th, there'll be a board workshop at 1:00 PM, and then on Tuesday, February 11th, there'll be a board briefing meeting at 1:00, as well as an action meeting at 6:00. At this point, having no other business, come before this body, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by Mrs. Gittens and seconded by Betsy Vaughn. Please record your vote. Home safe, everyone, and thank you for being here.